I will call to order the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors call me June 27, 2021, Tuesday, 4:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room, 39 Bank Street, Southeast of Chicago, Louisiana. A call to me to order roll call.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
Mr. Ingram?
Present.
Dr. Miller?
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here. I'd like to entertain a motion that we recess. We have some business we need to review before we can enter into this meeting. And in order to amend the agenda for an economic development item that doesn't pertain to what's on the agenda now, we have to have 100% participation. Dr. Miller had indicated he would be running late tonight, but he will be here, probably be within the next 15 minutes. So, we're going to take a brief recess and review some material and come back and start this meeting and make an agenda adjustment so we can address a very important economic development issue that has to be addressed tonight, too. So, if you all would bear with us, we'll be back with you in about 15 minutes. Thank you.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Chairman.
Yes.
Before you enter into recess, I just wanted to state for the public that this evening we are only considering two applications from the promoter, Worship on the Mountain and Country, what's it called?
Blue Ridge Country Music Festival.
Yes, the Blue Ridge Rock Fest is not on this evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I believe that the plans are to have that on our July regular meeting.
Twenty.
Yeah.
That's going to be the Rock.
Regular July meeting, okay? Please cast your votes. Please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. We'll be back with you shortly. For the interruption, one of the items that will be added will be hearing of the citizens tonight to our agenda. So, anyone wishing to speak tonight, we place the sign-up sheet so you can come up and sign up to speak tonight if you'd like to. Thank you.
Please make your way to the front of board supervisors, members and county staff as we will reconvene from our rec standing. Are there items to be added to the agenda? Are there items to be added to the agenda?
I apologize. Yes, it is. Were you waiting on me then? Yes, sir. Want to add to the agenda hearing of the citizens. And also want to make a motion to add the amended and revised moral obligation for SRP LLC to the agenda as item 4C.
Second.
A motion made and seconded. End of discussion on the motion. Okay, please cast your votes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, please cast your votes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Baden?
Yes.
Are you, do you have a copy of the hearing of the citizens so that you can read it out for everybody's information, please?
Yes, give me two seconds.
Sure.
All right. Each person addressing the board under hearing of the citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county or the registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during the hearing of the citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizens shall last for a maximum of forty-five minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up.
Okay, do we have anyone sign up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The first citizen is Jonathan Holly.
Okay, please come forward, Mr. Holly.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
Once again.
Yes, sir.
Nice to see you guys in a little different attire than the normal evening meetings that I've been. My file keeps growing here. But Jonathan Holly from the Chatham-Blairs District. First of all, to you, the board, board supervisor of Pennsylvania County, sincerely from me and my sentiments, thank you for your work, your time, your energy spent on the considerations of this entire venue and the venture that we're going. I'll say a special thank you to Chairman Warner, Supervisor Scares, Sheriff Taylor, Emily Ragsdale, and all the representatives from the agencies that have come out to a couple of our community hearings and meetings that we've had just to have some of the concerns expressed by the citizens. So thank you for that. Please know that our concerns and opposition, if you will, is because of the intimate impact that it has to where we live and our community, our homes, our homes values, our families, and the safety of our families. And those are all things that we sincerely are wanting to protect. And I would, I'd probably be willing to wager a bet with each one of you and hopefully anybody in this room that if you lived at the close proximity that we do and are directly impacted as much as we are, that you would probably have some of the same sentiments and feelings that we have. So just consider that. My ask of you this afternoon is that your work is not done here. We know that this is an ongoing process and that we, as a county and you guys as our board supervisors, that will continue to stand firm in our commitments and our expectations by abiding by the requirements of our music festival ordinance. And this is done so that for purpose-driven events or any other company or venue or venture that may want to come in and have events anywhere in our county, that they're expected to abide by that. And that we hold them accountable for the things that they're required to do and also for the things that they say they will do. And I know that we're hoping to see that this goes through in the most meaningful way and hopefully with the best results that have the least amount of negative impacts to the local community and eminent residents of the neighborhood. And in closing the, look, hey, I looked through it, one hundred and twelve pages. Don't think I didn't. I looked through every bit of it. I'm not going to go through and fine-tooth comb and nitpick. I know some folks of our community have shared with you, Chairman Warren, about some of the things that they were found in here. But I would just ask that, you know, going forward, that we already know that we have these couple of on the agenda for coming up and then one other, the Rock Festival will be on the July. But for 2022 and beyond, maybe the board would consider maybe putting some type of cap or limiting the total number of venues that we'll have. With that, again, thank you for all that you've done. We'll continue to do on behalf of the local citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Holly.
Thank you, sir.
Deborah Dix?
Deborah Dix, Blairs, Chatham, actually just Blairs. I live on Lester Lane. When my objection says, well, maybe your approval of not having parking on Lester Lane. If twenty-five thousand people, well, maybe they say they can stack two hundred cars on one acre and it's right in front of my house, right in front of my driveway, will I be able to get out? Will the lights be turned off at eleven-thirty? Or will the lights be turned off at two AM since they have a new little agenda on here, the little building where twenty-five hundred people can stay? Also, I object to any parking on Lester Lane. There are over a hundred acres to the right of that area on Sky that can accommodate that parking. They may have to do some work on Sky and they might have to get permission to be on Sky because it is a private road. So I would appreciate that. And I know that most of y'all always vote unanimously for anything. I mean, anything. You mind me of the board on Enterprise? As wish you, you know, have independent thinking. This is our neighborhood. No body should be able to come to your neighborhood with twenty-five thousand people disrupting your neighborhood. It's just their goals to minimize the impact of traffic for neighboring homes and businesses. My road is a dead end, has no traffic signs at all. So you can do fifty-five legally on that road. I have asked for signs, but we don't have two hundred people a day. I guess now maybe they should put the meter up. In October, we will have two hundred people a day or more. So I wish they would put up some type of traffic signs at least during all these occasions. And also, we went from one concert to three within two months. And I know you're going to approve them, but you got businesses behind you. Businesses most of the time are not in Pennsylvania County, do not live on my road, do not live in R and L. They might live on Route twenty-nine. But I know that you should consider these parking places and even the car camping is very close to my neighbor to their right. Which is also, I believe, we might have some sheriffs and deputies or something on our road. But I know you will approve it because you have people behind you. You have very rich people behind you. And I know you're not going to say no, but consider, I object to the parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dix.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We'll move to new business. Worship at the Mountain Music Festival permit application approval and consideration. Ms. Ragsdale?
Mr. Chairman, in the board's packet, there is a music festival permit application for Worship at the Mountain Music Festival, which it will be held the first weekend in September, the third through the fifth. All of the required plans required by the ordinance are submitted with this application. They are included in your packet. You are given an updated application with all of the required signatures from the agencies and county staff that are required to review those applications. Like I said, all plans have been reviewed and approved. You were also given an additional sheet. And on that sheet are some contingencies that some of those reviewing agencies would like to see taken care of between now and the event. They did not feel that these were things to deny their plans. They're just things that will need to be continued to work through as we get closer to the event. Some of those are contingent on number of ticket sales, things that the applicant would not know at this time because they have not been allowed to put tickets on sale. And some things are just, they're in the process of finding vendors, so we don't have specific names of vendors. They included what that vendor will do in their plan, but we don't have the specific name and we don't have the contract at this time, so requiring those things to be submitted prior to the event. All county staff that are responsible for reviewing plans and representatives from the other agencies are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. First, I'll entertain your board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I make the motion that we approve PDE's Worship at the Mountain Music Festival permit application as attached and presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, now we're open for discussion. Any questions, comments?
Just have one question from county staff. On these contingencies that are going to have to be looked at over time until we get to the concert, we will have the ability to revoke the permit if Purpose Driven Events does not fulfill these contingencies, correct?
Correct. So if you approve their permit based on these additional things being met, we will have the ability to revoke that permit if they are not accommodated or the conditions are not met before the event is held.
Thank you.
Yes, I have a couple of things I would like to address, and we've discussed them before. I noticed in reading through your material, and this would be applicable as far as I'm concerned, this is the district I represent. And if I'm going to vote to approve these, then I think it's important, our sheriff has done some research and communicated with the Nelson County Sheriff's Office. And they had indicated that the activity got a little more festive after the event in the RV area. And you don't start quiet hours according to what your material said until two AM. I would respectfully request that this board authorize a condition that that has to stop at midnight. It's only fair at least during the first year so we see how it's going to listen to what our citizens' concerns are and are saying. The second thing is the lighting in the camping area. You know, I would respectfully say that, you know, that ought to be cut back probably somewhere around midnight, between midnight and one o'clock, say twelve-thirty. Keeping those lights at a high level, you know, for, till nearly two o'clock is a little bit problematic in relationship to how invasive that will be on those folks that live on Carlton, Lester Lane.
That's right.
And lastly, this is something you all had said you would do, but it wasn't part of the package that I was able to see. And of course, we got it, the traffic pattern and all, kind of late. Was a condition that we have just a couple of roads that are state-maintained roads that come off of RL Smith Road, eight sixty-three, that dead end. And you all had indicated you were willing to have a deputy there during the event hours at all times to protect the citizens and give them ingress and egress priority to get in and out of that. But you didn't make it part of your plan, so I would respect, respectfully request that that be added to the plan before we vote to approve such plan. And I certainly hope my colleagues would support me. This is in my district and certainly the citizens around it certainly have more concerns than, you know, we see countywide. And I'd like to be a little respectful to them until we see exactly how everything's going to go as far as traffic patterns and all that. So I'd like to get some response from you all too before I see if my colleagues will support.
All three of you come on here. I didn't know if y'all was flipping a coin or what. Come on now.
No, yeah. No, you're good. So, Warren, I thought that, I think this discussion was more focused around Blue Ridge Rock Festival last time we were here. If you look at the attendance numbers for what we're proposing today, Worship and the country, they're a lot smaller. I know everyone likes to throw around that twenty-five thousand, but that's, what we're talking about today is a fraction of that. If we do need to revise our plans, given the attendance numbers that we're talking about for Worship and Country, we are willing to definitely amend them.
Yeah, it should just be noted that that feedback that you received was on Blue Ridge from Nelson. And so obviously Worship at the Mountain is a non-alcoholic event and a much smaller event in addition to that. I don't think, based on projected attendance numbers, that it would make sense necessarily pay a deputy to sit by the roads and back case. But that was definitely something we agreed upon for Blue Ridge, and I do think that that's something that we should do for that event. It's a much different.
Well, I can't support you if you're not willing to do that. We're only talking about one road and that's a minimal expense.
Okay, if it's one road. I'm sorry. I thought you said there were several dead ends.
No, one of them you're using, which is Carlton, Lester Lane. You're going to have people there anyway.
Right.
The other one is Carson Jones Road, which is right across from PCSA. I think those folks deserve to have someone at each event. I don't care if you've got five thousand people or you've got fifty thousand in the future. You know, it's already a busy road. They're pretty close to twenty-nine. So to make that concession for those folks that are probably experiencing some of the largest inconvenience of anyone is a minor request.
Oh, no, that's absolutely fair. I'm sorry. I missed the number of roads we were discussing.
Just Carson Jones Road.
Okay.
The dead ends. All the rest of them are either not state-maintained or they are past roads. So that's why I specifically said state-maintaining and dead end.
Okay.
To minimize your exposure.
Yeah, we're open to that.
How about the others? Quiet hours starting at midnight versus two AM, is that a big issue for these two concerts?
No, I don't think so. I mean, the Worship Festival will end fairly quickly. Again, as Terry mentioned, there's no alcohol, so we'll clear out pretty fast. The Country Festival, we will sweep and get people out. So I think as long as we talk to the sheriff about what type of time we need to make sure everyone gets to their cars and gets out or gets to their campsites. everyone gets to their cars and gets out or gets to their campsites, I think we're amenable to that as well.
But I think this is specifically retained campgrounds, quiet hours, correct?
Yes, yes. Specifically, that's where the big, it looks like in your presentation, you had the big lighting equipment that would be up until 2:00 a.m. I just, I mean, this is all a learning process and especially for those people on Carlton, Carson Lester Lane right there at the event. It'd be nice to, you know, have them to be able to go in and not see the lights too bright after midnight, so.
And I should point out that those light towers are directional, so they don't actually, they don't have a 180 degree where you're seeing it. They're very directional, pointed towards the ground. So there's not a whole lot of excess.
And if you all are flexible this year, we may be able to look at it after we've experienced it and be a lot more flexible in future years. But, you know, I just respectfully request that as we're learning this first year.
Yes, definitely. And again, those hours are just set so we can make sure everyone is in a safe place. They've made it back. It's fairly dark out there, so I think we can definitely revise those hours and work with the sheriff and make sure everyone's in a safe place before we cut off the lights.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, do you understand, did everyone understand the request that I made and all? We would need a motion from that, for that, to make them part of this one event?
You're going to add that to, add that to the motion, correct?
Just this year.
Okay, yes, sir.
Just this year.
Absolutely.
And everything after we have some experience behind us.
Yes, sir. No, I was saying, it's fair enough, yeah.
We need a motion to amend, to include those items. Is that correct, Vaden?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Got a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion on just accommodating these? We're trying to be cooperative to both sides. We want to protect the citizens. We certainly want to encourage opportunities in our area too, so please don't take this as we're trying to be negative to you all either, so.
Do we need to pull out of the motion that we did at first and come back because you got two different ones?
We're voting to amend the motion.
Yes, sir.
And if that passes.
But my second's in for the first motion, so.
The first vote is just to amend.
Yes, sir.
The motion, and once you agree to that, then we'll get a clean motion on the floor that clearly outlines what everybody's responsibility is.
Yes, sir.
We got a motion and a second. More discussion.
Who made the second on that amendment?
Dr. Miller made the motion. Mr. Davis seconded the amended motion.
Mr. Warren.
Yes, sir.
How will we, I think a lot of our public looks to our website and looks at different things to gain the access to the documents that we have today. With these amendments, will there be a reposting or revised submission?
Absolutely. Yes, we've already discussed that today. We're going to be very transparent. We've already pushed out documents, and any new documents today, we'll get them up first thing tomorrow morning on our website.
Good question, Mr. Palmer. Thank you. Any other questions? Any other comments? Okay, right now, we're voting on the amended motion to amend to include these few items that we're on the record as stating. Every, are you on the amended motion, Matt?
Yep, I just canceled that first one, so now I'm going to open up a fresh vote.
Okay.
Joe?
Technology is wonderful, thanks, long as you don't change. Okay, please cast your votes, gentlemen.
And I'm glad we got passed that one.
Motion carries unanimously with the amended amendments. Okay, thank you. We're down to item B. Soon as I can get back to my agenda page.
So item B is a music festival permit application for Blue Ridge Country Music Festival. That will be held October 1st through the 3rd on the property. All of the documents are included in your packet. Most of them were the same or very similar to the ones submitted for the Christian Music Festival that you just voted on. Additionally, I did pass out the traffic plan. That was not included in your packet because VDOT, the state police, and the traffic engineer met on that earlier today to iron out a few details. So that is included. I passed that out prior to the meeting, so you do have that, and we will get that on the website tomorrow. Additionally, the same contingencies that staff signed off on the approved documents for apply to this application as well, but all have been approved.
It also would apply because our last entry was that those items would include both events, correct? That's what we said.
Okay, yep.
So when you make your motion, just make sure you include all those amended items for the process. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve PDE's Blue Ridge Country Festival Music Festival Permit Application as attached and presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Ingram. Is there any discussion on the motion?
And that does include the amendments made to the prior permit?
Yes, it will include everything that is in the packet that Ms. Ragsdale presented and everything that we just amended for the first one will carry over to this one also and was acceptable by the vendor providing the services to. Okay. Got a motion, a second. Any more discussion? Okay, please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're down to.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Can I make a quick comment?
Yes, sir.
Just like to direct the board to give the county administrator the ability to ensure that the commissioner of revenue is prepared to collect all applicable taxes and fees related to the events at Blue Ridge Amphitheater. I think there were some current concerns about having the personnel available for that, so if the county administrator can take care of those issues.
That's actually baked into the ordinance, but it's good for you to remind us to follow.
All due respect to you all, we expect you all to make sure we get what's coming. Good point, Mr. Skaer.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make another comment also. I want to thank everybody that's been involved as far as getting it to this point. It's easy to get up here and do a vote, but, you know, I look around the room and I see, you know, the state troopers here, and I appreciate everything these guys do. Appreciate the protection that you guys provide for us, just like the, somewhat to the military as far as I'm concerned. Thank you, guys. I see Jay Craddock, Mike Taylor, Tommy Nicholson back there. It's a lot of work, Emily, our staff here, ton of work been involved getting it to the point where we just vote. And I just want to say respectfully, appreciate everything that's been done getting it to this point, and thank the promoter too, and those folks who's pushing it. Appreciate you guys.
All right, thank you. We're down to, anybody else got anything they want to say? Okay, we're down to the addition of amendment and revised moral obligation, and I don't see Mr. Rowe in attendance tonight, so I'm assuming Mr. Smithelman's taking that.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a very simple matter. We are amending an agreement that we have for financing the Stanton River Plastics LLC facility in Hurt. We have incurred additional costs that will be passed on to the tenant, which is Stanton River Plastics, and it's in the sum of $80,000, and we are asking you to ratify the attached document, which adds $80,000 to our loan amount to Stanton River Plastics. The new amount will be $8,772,280.
And basically, this new fee is the bank that's financing, it's American National Bank. They require, after we've already approved the documents, for a two-year warranty construction performance bond to be carried on this project to securitize them if something happened downstream during construction. So that, basically $80,000, as Mr. Smith said, and it's baked into the deal and the client and VC and PFL, of course, of their lease purchase.
Board's pleasure.
I make a motion, we approve that.
Second.
Yes, sir.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your votes. Okay, motion carries unanimously. I want to take a moment to share with several folks concerning the upcoming events. I think we would be making a huge mistake not to recognize our citizens that had town hall meetings and invited county staff and invited the board of supervisors. I think they even invited Purpose Driven to some. They're always difficult because people are passionate about their homes and where they live, but, you know, I know Ms. Dix has spoken several times at our meetings, but I needed to recognize a few folks that have really done a lot to express the concerns of the citizens, but did it in such a professional and courteous manner. And they are Ms. Dixon, who has just been extremely professional and articulate in expressing her concerns. Also, Mr. Holly has always been a gentleman and very understanding about both sides of the situation. He certainly is entitled, everybody's entitled to their opinions, and he has concerns because we've never experienced this size of event there. Also, Reverend Campbell, he was here, but he slipped out. He's been, you know, very involved in moderating the meetings and all, and Reverend Ewing, who opened his church up and allowed everyone to meet there because of the convenience and in an effort to represent his congregation and the surrounding citizens of that. They did a wonderful job, and I also want to thank this board because to the member, I think they tried to take into account the concerns of the citizens countywide and also those that surround the venue itself. And I think they tried to take in concerns what having something like this could mean to the future of the county if it's successful, and we're hoping you all the best of luck and hope it goes off in the best manner possible so that there can be a sustained future that will be beneficial to all in Pennsylvania County, including you all. But I just do want to compliment the board on their efforts. And lastly, as Mr. Dudley did already, I want to thank each one of the departments that took this matter very seriously, our health department, VDOT, for all their efforts. You know, I always take my hat off to our law enforcement, our state troopers attended one of those meetings at the church, and so I'm sure they're used to that probably more so than most of us where emotions are running raw, but we really appreciated y'all's efforts and y'all being there. I can't say enough about the efforts put forth by Sheriff Taylor and his staff in securing the best information possible to be able to carry this forward. Also, our public safety folks and the county administrator and county attorney. And I certainly can't go without, as I did at our last board meeting, recognizing the efforts of Ms. Ragsdale, who really worked diligently. I don't think she missed a meeting for anything, no matter how unpleasant some of them might have been. We appreciate you being there and representing the county very much. So with no other business to come before us tonight, we will declare the meeting adjourned.